Good afternoon. The Board Workshop and Shade Meeting of the Manatee County School District will come to order, and the good news and the bad news is we are going to have a Shade Meeting for the first 15 minutes, so wait, I'll read the statement and then everybody can clear the room. "Mr. Bill Kelly, Director of Risk Management, is seeking guidance from the School Board on evaluation of claims or offers of compromise of claims." The estimated length of the Shade Meeting will be approximately 15 minutes. The persons attending the Shade Meeting are Board Members John A. Cologne, Charlie Kennedy, Scott Hopes, Gina Messenger, and Dave Watchdog Minor, along with Superintendent Dr. Diana Green, School Board Attorney, Mr. James Dye, General Counsel Mr. Mitchell Titlebaum, and Mr. Bill Kelly, Director of Risk Management, Mr. Ron Serrana, Deputy Superintendent of Business Services and Operations, Ms. Cynthia Saunders, Deputy Superintendent of Instructional Services, and Ms. Michelle Boyes, Agency Clerk. All public address PA and recording devices will be turned off. The meeting will reconvene in the Board Room at the end of the Shade Meeting, which will be adjourned in public. So if your name was not called, if you would clear the room, make yourselves comfortable, the gift shops open on the second floor, and we should be reconvening in 15 minutes. This time, we will adjourn the Board's Shade Meeting, and we will call to order the Board Workshop for the Manatee County School District. On Agenda Amendments, the Chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under Agenda Amendments on the, on June 26, 2018 Agenda, updated June 22, 2018, and posted to the District's website. For the benefit of the public, we have a, a number of items on the agenda, but we have a time certain for item number five, which is for the Board to discuss the Superintendent Employment Agreement. So we will try to keep the first four items as tight as possible to allow for enough time for our time certain agenda item. Man of Vice Chair, do we have public comments?
We do. We have Anthony Cicilio. Shulow. Come on down. You've got three minutes, and after Anthony will be Linda.
Thank you very much. Again, Dr. Hopes, thank you very much for meeting with our community. I represent the Copperstone Community. We're the community that's adjacent to the new property for the elementary school. We represent 622 homes there, lots of kids, lots of families. We're excited about the school being there. We're excited about all of the development that's happening around that area, especially with the schools. We brought some things to the attention of the School Board President early on when we received notification of the proposal. We've also gotten some excellent feedback for the changes you've made. I'd like to say thank you very much for cooperating, or at least listening to us as we bend your ear a little bit on that. I got a sneak peek from what I think they're gonna show you a little bit later, but we really just had one remaining question, which was what your queuing was for outbound cars, which I kinda got a little bit of an answer to again early, but I'm excited to hear about that. And the, are you continuing to work with the county? I saw you worked with the adjacent property, but the remaining section of Moxon Walla Road that moves past this school that's gonna connect Fort Hama Road, I know it's not yours, but the county really, they know that there's a danger there. We have heavy vehicle traffic on Moxon Walla Road, especially in that segment. That's 18-wheelers, agriculture, Port, Port of Manatee moving through that road. And now we're gonna introduce schools and families, not just on the school time, the, the school times where we have resource officers, but the remaining time when they're using this school for other activities like scouts and things like that, we know are gonna come with that school. When you have heavy traffic moving down that road and they're not, and they're not budgeted to make an expansion in Moxon Walla Road, no matter what you do here for entry of vehicles and buses, you are still gonna have an issue with heavy traffic moving down that road and potentially injuring students, whether they're walking from new properties to the north or vehicles that are entering and exiting. So we hope that you continue to partner with the county, or they're at least willing to work with you all a little bit, and that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Linda, come on down.
Well, it's becoming obvious that the Board has some behind-the-scenes agenda in their choice of Superintendent. At the last Board Meeting, you introduced your choice without the seven days' notice to the public. This week, you've presented the contract without the seven days' notice to the public. You passed over the most qualified candidate for the position, someone who has extensive knowledge of the district finances and the new ERP system. You've set it up that the two top positions in the district will be filled with people who do not have the experience of this job. And the new contract does not state yet that the interim is not eligible to apply for the Superintendent position. You will not get qualified candidates if they think the position will be filled by the interim. Is this your intent all along? This is an at-will position. The district can replace this person without cause, so why in the world would you put in the clause that after 180 days, if this person is dismissed, that she gets a severance pay of 60 days' pay? This is an at-will and interim position. There should be no severance pay. And then there's the 10% incentive pay. The interim gets incentive pay if she actually does the job. How crazy is this? The Superintendent, along with the Board, sets up mutually agreed goals and measurable benchmarks, and she gets paid extra if she actually reaches these goals. The assumption is that if there isn't a carrot at the end of the stick, she will not perform her duties. Remember, all of this bonus money, incentive pay, severance pay comes out of the monies available for the classroom. The problem seems to be that three of you are up for reelection, and it seems that it's important for you to keep a lid on things until after the election.
And that concludes public comment.
Thank you. Item number one, Student Progression Plan, Mr. Lasada. I'm not gonna push that until one of your IT guys. Okay. I wasn't pushing it. No way. All right. Good afternoon, Board Members. Dr. Hopes, Mrs. Saunders, Mr. Serrana. So our committee met three different times to go over the Student Progression Plan. Can I sit back down and start? And the wonderful Dr. Green, I don't wanna leave you out. You definitely caught that, huh? Oh goodness. It's, yes. So our committee met three different times to go over the Student Progression Plan. We had a, what was approved last year, we had to go back and make some amendments to it based on House Bill 7069 with technical, the technical papers we received from the state. After House Bill 7069 comes out, we receive that information, and then we have to go back because our plan was already approved last year, we have to come back and put those in. And really, it's clarification of the information that was already in there. So there's two things I could do, and, and Dr. Hopes, I don't know if you wanna make a decision on that. I had prepared to go through each slide with the progression plan because it kinda goes on each page, or I can go through just the summary of what was, not necessarily changed, but for clarification purposes. You have both. I think what you're, what I'm seeing out here is what you're seeing on your screen, and that is the summary sheet, so I don't know if that's what you wanna do. Dr. Green.
I wanna ditto behind Mr. Lasada. Please note that the Student Progression Plan has to be posted out there for the world to see for a number-
Right.
-for quite a while, so if you had something you had a concern about, you had time to email Mr. Lasada to make changes, because this is a lot.
Right.
And-
I already have this.
Yes, and so you may want to go through the questions that individuals on the Board have and go through the summary, because you could be here until five.
And if I, that is, that is true. I could go 10 minutes or an hour and a half, Dr. Green, whichever you prefer.
Right. Let me just gauge the, the Board's current status. How many of you have already formulated questions around the Student Progression Plan updates? I know, I know Vice Chair Messenger has. Why don't we do that? Why don't we start with Vice Chair Messenger's questions?
Okay.
And then let's go through the update and kinda get a barometer reading of where we're gonna be, because we could probably spend an entire workshop on this update.
And, and it's really clarification, but it's clarification for anyone who views the Student Progression Plan to make sure that they don't have questions when they read it. We wanna make it as clear as possible. That's, that's the whole idea, so. Vice Chair Messenger, would you like to start us off?
Yeah, I really only have three questions.
Okay.
My first question, and I'm just gonna go through your slides-
Okay, very good.
-just 'cause they're more concise, was page 18, number five. I'm not sure how many slides in that is, because they're not numbered.
So your page 18 actually ends this and here?
Well, one, two, three, it's on the fifth slide.
Okay, fifth slide, very good.
The, the last one-
And the last one, it says added language.
Students who are retained must be provided evidence-based explicit systematic and multi-sensory reading instruction in-
Phonemic awareness.
Phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary comprehension, and other strategies.
Is that language directly out of the bill?
Yes, I think it is. And that's from the technical assistance papers that we received throughout the year, so we add that language in. So it comes in, if you looked at the, and I'm trying to go to the actual page, page 18, if you look, A was in there from last year on, on number five for elementary school students who are retained, and B was added, and we received those throughout the year, is what happens.
Okay.
So we add it, and when we get it, we put it in.
No, I get it, okay. Just phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary comprehension are all components of reading, not strategies, so that's why I was, but obviously-
But that is the language that they-
Our legislators have written that, so that's cool, I don't- Then my next one was-
Can I, can I comment on that?
Mr. Minor. Microphone.
Now, you're not to blame, you know, for this stuff. I appreciate that. It's our friends in Tallahassee who don't wanna be School Board Members, but they like to be School Board Members for everybody, and so we have this, this jargon, multi-sensory. Now, I guess it doesn't make a lot of sense, but what's your understanding of multi-sensory?
So I'm glad you asked, but that's really a combination of learning strategies at the same time, whether it be visual or hands-on or tactile, it's, it's bringing it all together in a learning environment.
How many sensories are there?
Well, I'm gonna start counting them. No, I believe there's five. Did I leave one out? You put me on, on the spot.
Well, it's not, not your fault. It's the spot that the legislature created, and I guess you talk about visual and-
Well, I-
-oral and taste, and it smells right, it smells like a rose, so R-O-S-E or something like that, and then you hear it. I mean, how, how do we incorporate all those senses into trying to satisfy our friends in Tallahassee?
Dr. Green, for response.
Multi-sensory doesn't mean that all five of them have to be used. I will tell you that traditionally, it's auditory, visual. Those are the two most common multi-sensory activities that are engaged in this type of curriculum, especially when you're talking about phonemic awareness and phonics. You must be, phonemic awareness, they're actually showing you a picture, and how do you make the sound based on what you see? Phonics is a lot about what you hear, so if we're going to spell cat, what are the, you know, the sounds that are heard in that particular word? So those are the two sensory of the five senses that are most used, but they were, this, this information basically is stating whatever you choose for a curriculum or resource, it must address these areas, phonic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary comprehension, and that it needs to be multi-sensory. So whatever we're choosing, for example, we use SRA with many of our retained third graders, it is visual and auditory. It, it depends a lot on, the visual is the teacher movement, the teacher has to make a certain direction for the students when they are sounding out words, but that is the purpose of this legislation, and that it must be research-based-
And evidence-based.
And evidence-based, we have to-
That's my favorite term, which I think's, again, nonsense. And so we have things explicit systematic. Is there anything that's unexplicit systematic in our, in our teaching, in our, in how we go about it?
In, in an effort to move this along-
Okay. I, I'm just, I'm just pointing out by my questions, and your, you know, very diplomatic responses, you know, the nonsense that the legislature imposes upon you, this Board, our students, and the time and expenses, you know, for, I don't know, this is their idea of not doing a job, I guess.
If I can, if I can just add to, our Curriculum Department breaks this piece down of what the legislation wants, and we try to do our best to get that out to schools so that they do have information at hand, so.
I think my questions would be better directed to our legislator.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Messenger, your second question.
Sorry, I opened a can of worms there. Two more slides later.
Slide seven?
Perhaps, I don't have numbers online. Page number 22 on the box, and it says, "For the 50th percentile or above on spring eye-ready reading diagnostics." So my question is more about the validity of those diagnostics. Since we're going to be using that perhaps instead of a standardized test.
For good cause purposes.
Right.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I get that. But in the same respect, are, is there, I understand that this is research-based, but the research can be skewed and not necessarily showing whether each item that, each standard that is supposed to be met is truly being met, and then is also being tested in the diagnostics. And yet, we're going to say this could be why they get to move on or not move on. And so my question is, is there not research based on if this program is effective, but is there research showing the validity of the diagnostics, showing that it is truly measuring the standards?
And Mrs. Saunders, I believe the, I don't want to say this-
Ms. Saunders.
-that the state has approved iReady as a, an alternative assessment.
The, the state has done the research in a crosswalk, and it does align to FSA, and it is one of the alternative assessments that is allowed to be used in lieu of or in addition to the FSA. If you go back and look at our district's scores by grade and by school, it, it lines up directly. And we do have the research of the statistics that do the crosswalk. So I, I can send those to you.
Please.
When they give us a report at the end, they do put the statistical analysis in there, but DOE allows this product as well as SAT-10, they have a couple of them. But that is why many districts have chosen iReady as part of their tier-three instruction, because it is able to be one of the options for good cause promotion if you aren't able to pass the FSA. And you can use parts of it as a portfolio that we're allowed to do with the summer as well. But I can, I'll give you a copy of-
I appreciate it.
-of the research, so, yeah.
Thank you.
But tho, those are good questions. It's amazing. We've now used it for about four years, so you can see a history of the alignment to FSA in our district scores.
Okay, well, thank you. I had one other one. I had one question about, and this is, oh gosh.
How many slides later?
I don't know, let me see. One, two-
I want to ensure that the page numbers-
I know, I, I went back and-
Maybe four pages later, and it's, it's onto the boxes, it says, "Page 45, number five." It's about credit recovery.
Yes. On the very bottom?
Yes, and there's a strike-through for remediation of students. So they're not going to use this credit recovery for remediation, only for grade forgiveness or, and I was curious why that will not be-
Well, it's not to be used to prepare for an end-of-course assessment. If they've already passed the coursework, then we wouldn't put them in a credit recovery just to prepare for an EOC. We, we actually offer boot camps at the schools for that, so.
Okay. That was it, those are my questions.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, from a timing perspective, we're down to about 28 minutes. Would you like to study this a little bit further and then get your individual questions to staff?
I'll probably come back with more. Dr. Reed's looking at me like, he's just going to ask more. I always do.
Now, I know Dr.- Would you like to add?
Well, I know Dr. Green mentioned that we have to advertise it for 30 days so that we can get it approved, so are we looking to ask more questions before we advertise? That's my, I guess my question. I know we can't do that here, but-
Our next meeting is, what, July 27?
Yeah, 24th.
So today, so you probably need questions in the next couple of days.
That would be correct.
All right.
Or if you want to come meet with me, Ms. Messenger, I'll be happy to sit down with you.
I'll bring a cute little two-month-old baby.
So, that's fine. So why don't, why don't we do this? Why don't we individually submit questions or go ahead and meet with staff and sort of work through it so that this can run its 30-day publication? Because I'm assuming we have to approve this before school starts?
Before we're bound by the prior one.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. So technically, we could take it up in the first meeting in August before school starts?
You, you can, but-
If for some reason we can't meet the date.
For whatever reason you can, but none of the new legislative changes will be in place until we've approved it.
Okay, so we're, we're going to go ahead and publish it, correct?
I'd be happy with that.
You can publish it for 30 days and still amend and work through it if, yeah.
Okay. So let's follow that process.
Okay, very good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, it's on, to publish it is on tonight's agenda, yes.
All right, Mr. Pendley, I think you're up for the next two items.
We are now on a discussion around the sale of annex property at 75th Street Northwest and 9th Avenue Northwest.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, board members, superintendent. Congratulations on your last meeting. We have recently received a request to sell a portion of the King Annex property at 75th Street Northwest and 9th Avenue Northwest. So I'm going to walk you through some facts about that property. Allegedly, I'm going to walk you through some facts about that. Okay. This is an email that was sent to, to Mr. Serrana, and it explains that Tom Sousa, who is the Fire Chief of the West Manatee Fire and Rescue District, was directed by his board to request that we consider selling him a portion of the property. They are looking for a site for an administrative office with approximately 10 employees, and they have identified this site as ideal for, for their needs. Yeah, I'm trying to use the arrow, didn't, didn't progress. So here is the overall photo of the campus. It shows in the bottom center, the original King Middle campus. You can see all the various classroom buildings there, as well as play areas and dry retention areas, which probably right now are wet. And the upper center part of the photo is the King Annex. That annex is approximately 6.86 acres. We purchased that in 2004 because the King Middle site was smaller than our other middle school sites. And when we rebuilt King, we had to, to accommodate additional retention. Okay, I am trying to move it forward with arrows, but it won't move. This is the annex site shown in more detail, and I've overlaid the requested portion of property that they're asking to purchase or for you to consider selling to them in yellow. That's approximately 27,550 square feet. And the two green areas are areas which they're asking for access easements. And my assumption as to the reason they're asking for this is because they're too close to the intersection of 9th and 75th to get adequate curb cuts, but I have not confirmed that with them. The, the access easements amount to about 13,500 feet. Some facts about the property. The overall annex property is 6.86 acres. It is subject to a shared inter-local agreement with Manatee County that we entered into in 2008, I believe. And that inter-local agreement allows the county to utilize our facility, basically the public to utilize our facility after hours. We obviously have first choice on it, and after hours, they can use the tennis courts or the, the fields and the restroom areas. So if you decide to sell the property, we would simply need to go back to Manatee County and amend that agreement to take this portion of the property out because it was, it was actually part of the exhibits. The portion of the property that they're asking that they, that you sell along with the easements is approximately .94 acres, slightly less than one acre of the overall 6.86 acres. And this site is currently used by King Middle School. I'm talking, I'm not talking necessarily the corner, I'm talking the overall 6.86 acres. It's used by King Middle School for recreation, for their PE classes. They use the tennis courts, I think they use some of the fields. And it's also used by Manatee High School, and they simply use the tennis courts because they have tournaments and practice over there. Ruth Gruett recently obtained an appraisal, that was last week, for the 6.86 acres. It was appraised at $680,000. The appraisal did not break out this particular portion of the property. With that, I would request that you ask any questions that you have and give direction to staff.
Would you go ahead and go back to the slide which shows the shaded portion of the parcels that they're interested in?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Members, any questions? Mr. Minor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The property that was purchased in 2004, how much did we pay for that?
The-
It was $1 million, wasn't it?
Yes, that is correct. It was $1 million.
Okay, now, did-
Well, there were other improvements on the site that we've removed. There were, there were clay courts on the site, very expensive to maintain. This was an old tennis academy site for Boliteri, which is now IMG. There was also a building on the corner that was a clubhouse, and we removed those so that, because they really weren't useful for the, the students and very expensive to maintain.
There, there used to be kind of a driveway that went along 75th Street Northwest, and went back to a house. And I, is that house still there?
There's actually two houses there, and if you look just south of the tennis courts on this slide, you'll notice a, a drive there, that's a Shell Drive, and that is an easement over our property. We, we actually acquired the driveway and gave an easement back to those two houses.
Okay, I, I guess it's, it's hard to delineate the... Okay, I, okay, down at the south here, we have that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, since, so this contemplated transfer would not affect those houses or that, that easement going through there?
No, sir, it would not.
Now, if I understood you correctly, the whole 600, the, the whole six and a half acres is appraised at $684,000?
$680,000.
Well, what were the limitations assumed, you know, with that appraisal? Because that, that seems unusually low for property in this area.
I can, I can discuss that a little bit. I did not commission the appraisal, it was not done for me. I have recently seen a copy of it. I do know the value of, that was, was attached to it. What the appraiser did was he took the overall parcel and divided it into 19, was it 19? Yeah, either 18 or 19 lots, and basically laid out a subdivision and applied a per-lot unit of, I believe, $40,000, somewhere right in that range. And that's how he came up with the $680,000. Obviously, he's operating on a lot of assumptions, but he is saying that the highest and best use for this property is single-family residential.
You know, the, the chair sort of made a remark that, gee, you know, it's gone down in 14 years, the value of this property, and I wasn't one of the cheerleaders for this purchase back then, but it doesn't seem like the value has gone down, you know, gone down that much in, in 14 years. I would have expected it to be at least double, you know, what we're talking about.
I was a little surprised at the value.
If, if I may suggest, my suspicion is that this issue is going to take more time than we probably can allocate today, and it's kind of sort of thrown on us. I think we first found out about it during our briefings last week.
Okay.
Probably a little premature to have the discussion that we probably need to have with regards to what alternative sites were considered. The, apparently, we have an agreement that would have to be modified with the county in order to even move forward with this transaction. We've got, you know, an appraisal that was done, and, you know, while I wasn't here at the time, you know, I, I would also, in addition to this, like to see what our long-range plan is for King, and whether we're going to need any additional space there, whether we're going to need space to build a replacement facility in the same location. I think there are some questions that we probably need to be better prepared to answer in order for us to have a, a constructive discussion about it. That's my opinion, I don't know about the other members. Mr. Kennedy?
I just have one thought, I was wondering, it really seems like if by selling these, selling these pieces, we really kind of render the rest of the property useless.
Right. Yeah, no, I agree. I think, I think, I think we need more information because I think this is a, this is a more significant decision than what may meet our, our initial observations. And, and no, no disregard to the Fire Chief, but-
How much have we, how much have we been offered for it?
We did, excuse me, back in, I'm going from memory, I'm getting old, but I think back in 2014, we were in negotiations with a tennis academy, United Tennis Academy. And I want to say at that time that they were offering $780,000 for, for like two-thirds of the property. It would not have been all the tennis courts, but I'm going from memory. You know, please don't hold me to those, those facts, but-
What, what's the Fire Department offered?
There's been no offer that I'm aware of. Dr. Green, I think you had discussions with them.
There's been no offer. The purpose was to bring this before the board, to see their interests before we could direct staff to do anything, to go any further. This, this particular section of the property, as Mr. Pendley said, was once negotiated, and I just asked Mr. Pendley, please look at, what does this mean, what does that look like? And I wanted it brought before the board before I exit, because I'm the one they came to.
Okay. We appreciate it, but I, I do believe unless there, Mr. Cologne?
Yeah, just a quick, a couple of quick things. I can agree with Mr. Kennedy. It seems to render the rest of the property useless. I'd like to know how many other parcels of land we have in that general vicinity area in case we have to build another school out there or any additional facilities. Although it's not growing as fast as East County, I still like to keep our options open for the western parts of Manatee County. And I don't think we have a lot of land out there that we can build on, do we?
Mr. Chairman, I can, can answer that. We have no other vacant properties out in this area.
Well, if we have no other vacant properties, this- Well, if we have no other vacant properties, it seems to me that this is the only property we could utilize if we are forced to build additional things out there. And there are some additional, there is some additional building going on out there, isn't there?
There is.
So I don't think it would be in our best interest, given those facts, to really sell the property or lease it, although I could be wrong. And, you know, it's up to the rest of the board.
I, I tend to agree. Mr. Minor, you're pretty familiar with this area, what are your thoughts? If this is the only property the district has?
Well, I, I've followed this for a long time. There is a need for more usable property for King Middle School. Part of it is, the west part of it is a swamp, and we, we've not done much to make that useful for physical ed. And I would hope that would be climbing up to the top of the agenda because we have the property, but we're not using it, and it's needed, you know, for phys ed at, at King Middle School. You know, it comes down to price, I, I wouldn't sell it for what's the appraisal. But, you know, let, let's look at it, and, you know, we want to work with the fire department. They're neighbors, and it's a great thing to have a fire station. I'm assuming this is more than an office, it's the idea to have, at least, have a place where they could have a fire truck, you know, that, there, so they would not have to go out onto Manatee or down to, you know, Fifteenth Avenue Northwest and then to address needs of fire in the northwest, that northwest part of, of Manatee County. And so I, I wouldn't dismiss it, but I, I think we need to think about it a little bit more.
Okay. I, I tend to agree, and I think that's, seems to be the consensus. So let's, you know, put this on our plate for further exploration, and let's go ahead and move to... Somebody's phone's listening to me. Let's go ahead and move to item number three, the new elementary school alternative bus access for our friends in Copperstone.
Okay. Okay, this one, um, this is a little bit longer presentation, I'm going to give you a little bit more information on this one. I think it's something that the board's going to like, and it's, it's something that we as staff believe is a superior alternative to what we've permitted, and we're asking for your consideration on that. A little background on this, we, staff permitted the North County Elementary School, which is at 115th Avenue and Moxon Waller Road. We did that on May 3rd of this year, the county commission voted to approve the site, and here is basically what that looks like. There's a gentleman here from Copperstone, I assured him that this is a very general graphic, the, the approved plan had more detail, it had a couple of playgrounds in the back. During that process, both at our community meeting and during the county commission meeting, there were a number of comments by the Copperstone folks that, most of them were focused on traffic, almost, I'd, I'd say 95% of those were focused on traffic and how traffic is going to impact the Copperstone neighborhood. A little background here, Copperstone has 622 houses, I believe the gentleman said, or 650, somewhere in that area. They have two access points, went on to Erie Road and went on to Moxon Waller. What you're seeing here on the left side of, of our school is the connection to Moxon Waller Road. So obviously, their concern is that one of their two primary connections is going to be significantly impacted twice a day. We, we permitted this as, as you see here, because when we acquired this site in 2007, this was part of an overall master plan for Copperstone. The Ryland Homes was the developer. We acquired this site from Ryland Homes, it was part of the original approved plan from the county commission, and it showed that access point. It's the only access point that was showed, and when Ryland Homes built Copperstone, they put a curb cut in here, they put the median cut in, and they extended water and sewer for the school. So nothing's really changed here. So we, we permitted it as such, but we've heard the concerns of the community, we heard the concerns of the county commission, and we promised both of them that we wanted to be good neighbors and that we would continue, try to work with them to resolve their concerns. We have made some changes in the site plan, such as providing a berm along Moxon Waller Road that the community had brought up, and we've relocated some playgrounds to make it a little bit more user-friendly. But the focus today is on how we access the site. So what you're looking at here are two different access routes converging at one point onto 115th Avenue. The first, in blue, is the parent pickup line. And that line has, I believe it was 3,200 feet of queuing to the pickup point where the two lines merge into one, and that, that amount of queuing is based on studies at several other schools in our planning process for this. The yellow line is our bus pickup area. You can see it extends all the way across the bottom of your site to the loop on the right-hand side or the east side of the site, and it, you would return on that same drive. So all the cars, buses, deliveries, the daycare vans, everything converges at that one point on 115th Avenue East.
Which is right in front of their electric gates into their development.
Yeah, it's 40 feet or so, something like that, in front of, in front of their exit gate. So we permitted that on May the 3rd. On May 13th, May, no, May 16th, actually, just not even two weeks later, staff met with the owner of the adjacent property, which is Neil Communities specifically. We met with Pat Neil and some of his folks, and it was, actually, we were meeting on something else, but we, we posed the concept of, of us having a connection through his commercial and residential subdivision. Mr. Neil was receptive to the concept, which we very much appreciated. We told him what the concern was with Copperstone, and he went away. We had several communications during that time, and he came back on June the 13th with this schematic plan. And what you're seeing here is he has realigned some of his internal roads to provide access to our bus loop without going over to 115th. And that's going, you can, everything in red here, that's commercial or non-residential, whereas the yellow area is our residential. Let me go to the next slide, and, and you'll get a better idea. Now, again, we've got the car rider loop in blue. What we're proposing is to eliminate all of the bus drive except for what you're seeing in yellow right there. So the original bus drive is gone, and we would tie in to the adjacent subdivision, Morgan's Glen. So what that does is it separates the, the traffic, especially the heavy vehicle traffic, buses, delivery vans, waste management, the, a lot of daycare vans, and a handful of personnel, school personnel. Those are generally custodians, they're, it's kitchen staff, they generally park back by the kitchen area. So all of those folks would be separated out, and it also eliminates a significant portion of the bus drive. We have worked with our construction manager to determine how much credit we could get back if we didn't build all of the bus drive. Unfortunately, it's not as much as, as we were hoping for, but it is a dollar-for-dollar credit. It's just that we have to go and put, fill dirt in and regrade and do things like that. So all said and done, there's about a $46,000 credit coming back to us. But that definitely lessens the traffic on 115th, which is what we've told Copperstone we would try to do. We would try to continue working on this. The other real important thing here is it provides bus access. I'm going to go back a slide, two slides, okay, well, sorry. It provides bus access all the way over to Fort Hammer Drive. Fort Hammer Drive is what you're looking at on the right-hand side of the screen there. That is the Fort Hammer extension between Moxon Waller Road and Erie Road. Mr. Neil is constructing that. He has entered into an agreement with the county to do that. He's also constructing the portion that's south of Erie Road down to 301.
And so what I'd just like to remind everyone, if you, if you recall, we moved, we moved the entrance to the North River High School to the new Fort Hammer Road.
Correct.
So now what we will have is, is the majority of the large vehicle traffic will enter the elementary school off of Fort Hammer, just as the entrance to the high school and the future State College of Florida. So we basically have moved the majority of the heavy traffic off of Copperstone's entrance and, and off of Moxon Waller. And we only have a minute.
I'll make it fast. So we would also have a tie-up to Moxon Waller Road. That would probably be limited to a right-in, right-out, at least, ultimately, it would be because that's, doesn't need to be a six-lane road. Here's the rub on it, when we permitted this and, and we put it out to bid, we did it based on the budget we have. We don't have the money in our budget to accommodate this. There is a cost associated with it because Mr. Neil has to redesign his internal roads, and so there'd be a cost sharing. I will tell you that, that's real hard to get our hands around right now. I talked to him yesterday, he said it, it's a swag, okay? But in addition to the $46,000 that we have, probably another $300,000. But those are details that we would have to work through. So at this point, we're simply requesting that you provide direction to us. We, you know, we think it's a superior alternative, but we want direction from you.
Members, what's your pleasure?
I would just say that anything that is going to make it easier on the residents in the area, I'm inclined to go along with. I don't, I try not to put a cost on a child's life or on residents' lives, and I think that the traffic congestion the other way might be a bit of a problem.
Okay. Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor. I, I guess my only request is to make sure that the county commission knows the changes because I know I had spoken to Priscilla.
Yeah.
And she, at the time, wasn't aware of what changes were being made, and so just, you know, I know that she's working hard to work on, build, fix the infrastructure out there, too.
Right.
I did meet with the county, the county transportation staff last, last Thursday and showed them this, so they're aware of it, they liked it.
And Chair Trace knew that we were working on the alternative to come up for.
Yeah.
Mr. Minor?
Well, I, I think this should aptly be named the Charlene Neil Boulevard, and, and...
I can agree with you.
And I think I talked about the Pat Neil Boulevard being south of there, but in recognition of his extra contributions for making this possible.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Neil. All right, we are a minute, a minute past our time certain. I obviously am very much in favor of this, so...
I think we've got our direction.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Gibson, I think we're going to give you a pass today, if that works.
She seems shaken up about that.
All right, now, members, if you're hearing out quickly, so we, we've got two items remaining. Mr. Horn, who's the vice chair of the Citizen Financial Advisory Committee, is here to make a statement on behalf of the committee, and then he is also on the Board of State College of Florida, and they have a board meeting, I think, at 5:30. So we can do this a couple of ways. One is we can, I, you know what, I, I'm going to try to move along this discussion to 4:30 and give you time, so if you're out of here by five?
Perfect.
Okay, great. All right, let's go ahead and, and members move into the discussion of the superintendent's employment agreement. We, we heard comments from a, a couple of speakers, and I just, I just wanted to sort of remind the members and the public that, that we had relatively limited time to ensure that we're in compliance with state law in just a few days. We, we worked through the, the proposed, one of the proposed agreements, which you were all provided with, I think, on Friday. And just on, on a highlight basis, it, it is an at-will type of agreement. It provides for a 45-day termination on both sides without cause. So basically, it's a 45-day agreement. There, there was a, a speaker that mentioned the issue of a severance pay, and I think the reason why that's relevant is because the, the candidate is currently a deputy superintendent with a one-year contract that was just renewed at a particular salary rate, and it, it was probably in the district's best interest and the employees' best interest that, you know, in moving into this interim role so that we can stay in compliance with law, you know, she lose as, as little of the benefits that she has. There was also a comments regarding the performance incentive. If you will notice, the, the, the salary that was agreed to is lower than the current superintendent's salary. It is higher than the deputy superintendent's salary. But because this is an interim role, chances are the deputy superintendent's position will not be filled because we, you know, are, are going to be working through the process for a search. So the, the performance incentive is structured only in the case that the interim superintendent would serve a full year's term, and it was aligned so that there would be the opportunity to basically earn up to pretty much the current superintendent's salary if she stayed in that role. So that's the reason why that's in there. And so with that, I think I can turn it over to Mr. Dai to just go through sort of the structure of the agreement with regards to the high points of, of what it means and what it doesn't mean. But the, the high points, I think, were, were just covered. Mr. Dai?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. In, in a few moments, Michelle's going to be handing out another document. When I was going over things last night, I realized that this draft has two paragraphs 15 in it, and they're, they're duplicative, so I took that out, and Michelle's going to be providing a, a clean copy in just a few moments. The only change was there's some formatting adjustments and, and removing duplicated language. The chair went over, I think, some of the important things about regarding salary, and while he, he characterized it as an interim contract, I think it's important to note that in Florida law, there's no such thing as an interim superintendent. You either are the super or you're not the super. So it is structured so that if, if you come to an agreement with Mrs. Saunders, she will be your superintendent while you conduct your, your search, which, which means it's also structured to give her full authority to, to do the things that superintendents do while she serves. The base salary, that's, Dr. Hope's went over that. There is a 10% incentive package. That is based on a incentive agreement that still has not been agreed upon. It's, it's, this is happening fast, there are certain things that cannot be put together that quickly. So there is a timeframe in the agreement so that by August 1st, the superintendent, the new superintendent, and the board will come together with a package based upon expectations of the board and, and how well Mrs. Saunders meets those expectations. That's just the concept. The devil in the detail still has to be resolved, still has to be agreed to, but August 1st is, is the deadline for, for that. Sick days and personal days, vacation, those are in line, I think, with, with a senior Dr. Hope's talked about the, the termination is 45 days at will from either the... Dr. Hope's talked about the termination is 45 days at will from either the board or from Mrs. Saunders. There is a severance package if there is termination without cause. It's a 60-day package. Florida law allows up to 120-day package. So it is scaled down a little bit in light of the expected short duration. The with-cause termination, that's in light of all the other superintendent contracts that you've had with both Dr. Green and Mr. Mills before her. Indemnification clauses, they're in line with what you do with other superintendents. And I think those are the high points. The rest is legal gobbledegook.
[laughing]
Albeit important legal gobbledegook.
Okay, thank you. So, members, what I'd like to do is kind of work through, I'm going to bring up the email that I sent out because I think that's probably the first decision that we need to discuss and work through. Our objective should be to work through this agreement and any agreed-upon changes, additions, deletions, so that during the break between the workshop and the board meeting, we would be able to produce what we would believe would be the final agreement to take up and discuss under new business in the agreement. So I don't have the email because I realize I sent it out to all of you, but I didn't copy myself. But there was discussion when the issue first came up around the interim, whoever he or she may be, would not apply during the formal search for a superintendent. So in my mind, that's kind of the one outstanding issue that we probably need to discuss first and come up with whether that gets included or not in the agreement. Are any other suggestions about where we start? Ms. Messenger?
I guess I took from your email to make notes. So I have a list of notes, and I sent them to Michelle.
Right.
But I'm comfortable with going whichever way you want to go. If you want to start with this and then tackle other stuff, whatever works for you.
Let's try this. How many of you want to address the issue of the interim applying to be the permanent superintendent, keeping in mind Florida law, once she takes the oath of office, she is the superintendent, the agreement provides for the termination of the agreement once we select another superintendent? Mr. Kennedy says yes. Mr. Minor?
How are you getting the line to speak here?
You hit the speaker button.
Okay, I've had it. It doesn't show up over there.
Ah, okay. Well, Mr. Minor, you have the floor.
Okay. Thank you. I think a lot of effort went into this. I have prepared an alternate proposed contract. If I give it to Michelle, she could pass it around.
Okay.
Okay. Or maybe we can just pass it down. Here's one for.
Pass it down.
Okay.
So just to help me with preparing, does your alternate agreement address the issue of the interim applying to be the permanent superintendent during the formal search process?
It includes many of the things that the proposal by the chair, Mr. Dai, had. In terms of salary, it would be the same. But it would include, to directly answer your question, this provision. Mrs. Saunders shall not be entitled to apply for or accept appointment as the new superintendent. Mrs. Saunders may apply for and accept appointment as deputy superintendent. That would be in paragraph one. My proposed employment agreement is several pages shorter than what was put forth to try to be, is six pages. I don't think you need all these where-ases. And I have never, I'm not familiar with the term "formal superintendent search." I don't know what that means. I would just delete out that word.
So, Mr. Minor, for process, for process, would you be okay with us at least addressing the first, what I think the issue we all have, which is whether or not the superintendent would apply? You make it more restrictive. You're basically proposing that even if we liked the job the superintendent was doing, she could not be the superintendent?
That is correct.
Okay. So can we take up that issue first, the issue of being able to apply during the search process, and just have a discussion? And then we can, you know, see if we want to go to where Mr. Minor is, or we don't want to put it in at all. Mr. Cologne, I think you've got your mic on?
Yeah, I have my mic on. I'm not inclined to limit the board's choices one way or another. I prefer that she not apply. But if something comes up and we need her, or we feel that she's doing such a superior job, that would be our decision.
Right.
And I'm not going to handicap myself before the fact.
Okay, that's all. Okay, Mr. Kennedy?
I have said previously that I don't think she should be able to apply for the job. And I think, if I remember correctly, Gina and Watchdog said the same thing. But I will let you guys speak for yourselves.
Okay. Mrs. Messenger?
As the public comment speaker said today, you know, we don't want to inhibit people that may apply. I get your argument. It's an incredibly valid argument. You know, you don't want to box yourself into a corner either. But we're boxing ourselves into a corner, I guess, in the other way, too, to me, because then we may not get as many people that are even willing to apply because they think, oh, we're just going to hire who's already here. And they may not, we may not have as much competition for the job as we would like.
Okay.
I would highly doubt that.
So, hold on, hold on, hold on.
I'm sorry.
So, let's go around because we want Mr. Minor to wait.
Okay.
Wait for Mrs. Messenger.
Nope. So I'm in favor of having that clause.
So, just for clarification, Mr. Kennedy mentioned a restriction against applying for the position. And that's where you are, just for the discussion purposes?
Isn't that what the verbiage is here?
Right, right, right. But now we're going to go to Mr. Minor.
Miss Saunders shall not be entitled to apply during the formal search for appointment as the new superintendent.
Correct. Okay, Mr. Minor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a difficult decision. As board members, our client, in a sense, our priority is for what is best for the district. If it was friendship, I feel great friendship, you know, with Cynthia Saunders. I think she's done a great job as deputy superintendent. And I don't want Cynthia, my remarks, to be construed as anything negative about you. But I want it to be construed as very positive for the district. That, and our duty, you know, for the district is to seek as the regular superintendent, for lack of a better word, you know, the best possible person, and to encourage the best, all the best possible people out there, you know, to apply and to be reviewed, you know, by this board to determine who would be the very best. In making herself available to be interim, she disqualifies herself from that search, in my opinion, because it does have an inhibiting effect. And I've been told that by many. Why should I subject myself, you know, to the application when it's already demonstrated that the person acting as interim is favored by the board, by friendships, by being there, and they don't, they can't have the same appreciation for someone, you know, outside of the school district? And that's why my proposed contract makes very clear to anyone that is outside of the district that they will not be competing with some, you know, person who is already sitting in that seat. And it says to apply or accept appointment as the new superintendent. And makes also clear that Miss Saunders may apply to and accept appointment as deputy superintendent. That's paragraph one of my proposed contract. Otherwise, it's very much like what the chair and Mr. Dai, you know, put together.
Okay. So on this issue, Mr. Minor, Mr. Minor's language goes further. And I will just preface that the opinion of the Florida School Board Association and the opinion of the Florida Association of District Superintendents is that the board not restrict itself nor restrict a future board with regards to making decisions. So I believe that if we had the language that the superintendent, the current superintendent, which in this case would be Miss Saunders, would not apply during the search process, would not, it would provide for outside competition because they would not be competing on an interview basis, on an application basis, on a review of credential basis for the position. And my sense is that there are at least, well, I guess, three that definitely want to go that far with regards to Miss Saunders not applying in a way that allows Miss Saunders to focus on her job as superintendent, while the rest of this is going off on the periphery. Mr. Minor wants to go further in that regardless of the job that may be performed and regardless of the quality of the applicants for the superintendent's job, we could potentially be binding a future board such that they could not hire because Miss Saunders would have agreed to in writing, and I don't even know if she would agree to it, that she would not accept the job as superintendent, even if the entire community and the new board, if there was a new board, let's say, three new people and the two of you. But I don't think that will happen. I think we're all going to be here. That would be my concern about Mr. Minor's proposal, is that it would be potentially binding a new board regardless of the job that Miss Saunders would perform. They couldn't hire as a superintendent.
Mr.?
Is that what you were?
No.
No?
Mr. Chair, if I may respond to that.
Mr. Minor, for response.
Well, one, the Florida School Board Association has not taken a position on this.
Have they spoken in a public meeting on it?
No, I heard Andrea speak.
The director.
But she was not speaking for the board.
Okay.
And as a member of the board of directors of the Florida School Board Association, I can have a front-row seat for what it takes a position on. I can't speak, you know, for the superintendent's association, but I've never seen them with a position on that. This does not bind future boards. The binding is with respect to, you know, what we are telling the world, that, you know, she will not be, and she will not apply, she will not accept. And if we're going to have a message out there to all applicants, we have to have that language. If we want to have the very best. Now, if she wants to apply, that's fine. But she will not then be, you know, interim superintendent, and we will go about having a search. Now, I've heard the chair several times say, well, we have to have a superintendent. Of course we do. And, but we don't necessarily have to rush to it either. When Dr. McGonigal, you know, had a letter read that effective at 12:00 midnight on that Monday, I will no longer be superintendent. And there was, you know, it was about 8:00 PM on that day. Well, we found someone to act as superintendent.
How well did that work out?
What?
How well did that work out?
Well, you know, we ended up with Dr. Green at this point. But I'm at, and in fact, what I have, you know, for you right now is based upon the only interim agreement that I'm aware of that the district has, and it was the one with Mr. Gaylor. And he was brought on, you know, a couple of weeks, you know, after that occasion. Now, this rush is kind of like shooting your parents and pleading mercy of the court because you're a, you know, an orphan, you know, to rush it along. And that's what we have done. And you heard my talk the other day about, we haven't really done this due diligence. We didn't ask for resumes. We didn't ask for any formal application. And it seems like we're doing that with respect to this contract as well, but...
So help me out. The last time we had a situation where we had very limited time to fill the position, that was Superintendent McGonigal? I think it was.
On a Friday.
And who replaced, who, no? Who replaced? It wasn't Dr. Green?
There, you know, I think for that, I think at that night, you know, for a day or so, we had Mr. Gagnon acting as interim. And it was an interesting meeting, but it was understood that he would not be a candidate, you know, for being superintendent. Now, and Florida School Board Association was contacted, and one of the applicants was Mr. Gaylor, who was actually hired as interim and stayed until late March, you know, as the superintendent.
Okay. So help me, help me out here because you've taken this position. So we have a few days. So given the fact that the agreement we have, and I will tell you that Mr. Dai and specifically I did discuss with Miss Saunders the clause regarding not applying for the superintendent's job during the search. And she can, she's willing to accept that amendment. Now, with regards to going further to say that you won't be the superintendent regardless of your job, that would probably require a discussion with Miss Saunders. Likewise, probably from a process perspective, the agreement that was distributed was the agreement that was negotiated with Miss Saunders, with Mr. Dai. Miss Saunders had independent counsel. So we probably need to work off that agreement rather than substitute an entirely new agreement.
I think you're talking about a proposed agreement. There isn't.
Well, proposed agreement, a proposed agreement that's had far more negotiating back and forth between the parties than yours.
The parties, the board.
Let's find out. Let me just poll the members. We basically are dealing with two proposed additions to paragraph one. The proposed that you had in your email reads...
It says, "Saunders shall not be entitled to apply during the formal search for appointment as the new superintendent." Can I add one thing, though?
Yes, ma'am.
I have Dr. Gaylor's contract as well. And just to, for point, Dr. Gaylor's contract also says, "Dr. Gaylor shall not be entitled to apply for appointment as the new superintendent." It's the exact same wording, except for the words "formal search," I think. Formal search is the only part that's been added in.
Right.
What is formal search? What is that different?
Mr. Dai, that would be the publicly announced search process to solicit applicants to fill the position of superintendent. There are firms that do that. There are search firms. That would be a formal search.
I don't, you're either searching or you're not.
Mr. Dai, would you like to respond to Mr. Minor? Let's let the two attorneys work it out. I'm not an attorney. I didn't even stay at a Holiday Inn Express.
Mr. Chair, I was just simply trying to capture the idea that you would be going out through a search firm, doing as broad a search statewide, nationwide, however you want to do it. But something other than running an ad, I mean, something a little bit more, with a little bit more legs to it.
Right, formal.
So I use the phrase "formal." There is no definition of formal search, however, but...
It's a search.
It is as formal as the board wants to make it, though.
It could be. I think it adds confusion. It's a search or it's not a search.
So the word "formal" is the problem?
Yeah, it's a search during the search. Yeah, it's a search during, during the search, period. It's being accurate.
Well, the benefit we have of Mr. Minor is he's not getting paid by the hour. So, anything he can contribute, it's, it's, it's valued, so. I think the word "formal" shows up in the agreement a few times. Just from a polling, is there, Mr. Minor's pretty direct about it. Does anybody have an objection to eliminating the word "formal"?
Let, let, let me say the reason for that. It in.
I'm gonna do it for you.
It, it invites litigation. Somebody say, "Well, I didn't apply during the formal search, I just applied during the search." Huh?
Uh, okay, so, let's just, let's, Ms. Saunders, do you think you or your attorney would have a problem eliminating the word "formal"?
I think I'll be okay with that.
All right, so, show it done. All right, um, so, let's go back to the revised clause, which would say Saunders shall not be entitled to apply during the search for appointment as the new superintendent.
Mr. Chair, what document are you reading from?
I, I'm reading the, the email, that's the language that I think was in your, your draft, where you had a draft with and without that clause.
What, so, when do we stop? You know, that, that, that's why I had the language, shall not be entitled to apply for or accept appointment as the new superintendent. If you say during the search.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, she's already the superintendent, so it's, I mean.
No, she's not.
Mr. Dye.
Mr. Minor's suggestion about having a phrase that prevents acceptance of the job if offered.
And she's already in the job.
I, I, well, I'm supposing at the end of the search. I don't think you can do that legally.
I don't think you can.
Because it's a contract between two parties and the two parties control what you can and can't do. If the board gets to the point where Mrs. Saunders is the best candidate, however they get to that point, through search or through otherwise, and they offer the job and someone says, well, she can't accept it because there's a contract restriction, then the two parties sit down and amend the contract and removes the restriction.
Right.
So, I, I'm not sure what kind of a.
Would that be moot?
It, it would, one way, it would be an additional step to get to where the two parties want to get to.
I, I, I agree with Mr. Dye. I, I think it's kind of a perception to the, that the rest of the world. If they had, if the rest of the world knows that the interim superintendent, Mrs. Saunders, who's, you know, wonderful person, very qualified, has in her interim superintendent contract a provision that says she is not entitled to apply for or accept appointment for superintendent, I think it encourages more qualified applicants to this job. And that's the bottom line of what we're trying to do.
Okay.
And that's why I have that specific language.
So, 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 given Mr. Dye's opinion, which I tend to agree, because keep in mind, the way the agreement is structured, the agreement doesn't end until another superintendent is hired. And so, let's just say that after an exhaustive search, not a formal search, but an exhaustive search or a search.
It's a search.
We would, the, the, the board would find that based on the candidates that applied, Ms. Saunders would rise to the level of it being desirous to continue. You have an agreement where she'd be superintendent, and as Mr. Minor and Mr. Dye mentioned, the board could make a decision to amend the agreement to allow Ms. Saunders. But I see Mr. Minor's point that it would be pretty clear that it's the intent of the board to, to set aside Ms. Saunders as a candidate for appointment or for applying during the search. Was that a fair?
Well, it, it says in here she weren't, but, uh, it, it, we don't, uh, handcuff, you know, future actions to the board.
Because the board could amend it?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's good PR for getting applications.
Okay. Why don't we just, you want a show of hands if you're okay with Mr., with that language? And then we'll ask Ms. Saunders if she would be okay with that language, given Mr. Dye's explanation. Are there any objections to it? To language similar to you had earlier.
It's the end of paragraph one of my proposal.
That Ms. Saunders.
It's the last.
Ms. Saunders shall not be entitled to apply for or accept appointment as the new superintendent.
And then we have, you know, can add in that language, I have Ms. Saunders may apply for and accept appointment as a deputy superintendent.
Okay.
I, I would be fine with that, but I don't think that's, that would be whoever is the next superintendent's decision.
Well, we, we have.
But she could apply.
But, but we, yeah, she could apply, just saying she could apply.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think Doc, or Mr. Kennedy's comment is, uh, correct. I mean, it, it's, um, it goes without saying type of sentence.
And, and there is a provision, there is a, a paragraph in here that makes it clear that the board doesn't have authority to hire a deputy superintendent, but it would endorse.
Yeah, I saw that in the original.
It's kind of a nudge, it's kind of a nudge that, boy, she is really good.
Okay, uh, so, Mr. Dye, do you think it would be appropriate to go to Ms. Saunders and see if that change would be acceptable?
Yes, I, I do, I do need to say, I don't have a copy of Mr. Minor's agreement, so, I'm a little bit out of the loop on.
Okay, I thought I sent it down.
So, it would be, it would be the last two sentences in paragraph one. Okay, has everyone found the, the last two sentences on paragraph one of Mr. Minor's proposed, uh, agreement? On page one, the last two sentences of paragraph one. So, um, and Ms. Saunders, do you have a copy of it?
Yeah, you got it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Couple of comments on Mr. Minor's language. The first, um, the first sentence, the, the next to the last sentence, but the two, the two sentences we're focusing, focusing on. Ms. Saunders shall not be entitled to apply for or accept appointment as the new superintendent. I would just put some kind of a, um, explanation in there that that's at the end of the search that the, that the board is going to conduct. It's not forever and a day, but, you know, but, but just at the end of the search, you know, that's, that's when that restriction applies, if the board.
Up to and until the end of the search?
Until the end of the search, yes.
Okay, so we can.
I, I, I think that just muddies the waters, Mr. Dye.
I, I'm not sure it's critical.
Then you have to figure out, when is the search over?
It's, it's not a hill to die on.
Until, until after we deserve it, the end of the search for troops or something.
And I'll, I'll say this, that at the time that you do hire a superintendent, then, then this contract expires on its own terms, so.
Right, so.
I, I think it's, I think it's fine to leave it as is.
Yeah.
Now, the second, the next, the last sentence in that of the, of the pair, Ms. Saunders may apply for and accept appointment as a deputy superintendent, it implies that the board is giving authority.
Authority, right, I agree.
That it doesn't have, yes.
So, let's, let's just take that out.
Okay, I, I don't have any objection.
Yeah.
The.
Because it's covered elsewhere.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, there may be a little bit different. In, in my paragraph one employment, I indicate that in the, yeah, she will serve, uh, effective July 1, 2018. That, that's when Dr. Green's ending her, her role here. Ms. Saunders shall serve as interim until June 30, 2019, or until the board installs some other person to serve as interim superintendent or as superintendent, whichever may occur first, unless this agreement is terminated by either party as herein after provided. And the provided in here is much as what was in, um, you know, the Dye chair, but it says each party shall give, um, at least 30 days' notice of cancellation. I don't have anything about for cause or not cause, that invites litigation.
Well, and, and, and I'll let Mr. Dye speak to it, and I, I realize you've put a lot of effort into an entirely different agreement than any of the other party, the other attorneys have seen, both on Ms. Saunders' side and, and our side. So, if, from a process perspective, I believe it would be best for us because it's already been a challenge that we did not give seven days' notice. So, if we started working off of your agreement to be the final agreement, we'd be in a, a, an additional situation. So, perhaps if we could, if we could focus on the agreement that had been negotiated up to the point of the board taking this up and making changes as we're going through, that perhaps each paragraph we come to, if, if you strongly, strongly feel that, um, that you can't live with it, then we should probably deal with it. But if we can get through at least paragraph one with that amendment, which is your language of the second to the last sentence on your paragraph one, which would go into this agreement. And so, Ms. Saunders, we're now to you with regards to the language, Ms. Saunders shall not be entitled to apply for or accept appointment as the new superintendent. Given Mr. Dye's opinion that the board could amend the agreement, should they be desirous of you accepting the appointment as a superintendent after whatever efforts we went through?
I do think the language is confusing, and I think you said that. I, I know what the intent is, I have no problem with the intent, but I think it is confusing when you say accept or appoint the new superintendent. What, I don't know.
Okay. The second sentence is out.
Did you change it?
The, the last sentence.
Yeah, we, we eliminated the last sentence.
Right, right.
And so, we're just talking about this.
I guess the phrase "the new superintendent" because if I'm appointed, what is my position called? Am I not the new superintendent?
I, I know.
I'm just, I understand what the intent is, I have no problem with the intent. I specified that along, that.
So, so perhaps we, we're agreeing with the intent.
Applying during a search or so forth.
So.
I think you just need to wordsmith it so it's clear to everybody.
What it means.
What you mean if you're undergoing a search and there's other candidates and a person is selected from that pool of candidates.
So, you're the new superintendent until there's another new superintendent.
Well, I, it, it, it just, I think it just needs to be wordsmithed. But I have no problem with the intent of what you're trying to say.
Members of the board, in what Mr. Minor's trying to accomplish, I think what you need to say and to get the intent of the board and the will of this board is during the search, during the search, then throw that language in. She cannot apply for or accept the appointment, that is clear as day.
Yeah, I think that makes it a little easier.
Okay, well, so you can.
You superintendent.
Okay.
The, the language in my proposal talks in terms of this is a contract for an interim superintendent. Now, I agree, uh, there, whoever has this, you know, position, you know, has all the authority of the superintendent and this contract addresses that. But, uh, to, I don't know of any other way to describe, you know, someone who succeeds an interim superintendent other than a new superintendent.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Dye.
I have some language, um, that just happened to have brought with me. Let me throw this out because I think, uh, it may, it's lengthy, but that creates clarity, um, sometimes. Here's what I have. Saunders agrees that she shall not participate as a candidate in the board's, uh, search for a superintendent while employed with the board pursuant to this agreement. That means that while she's under contract as superintendent, she agrees not to throw her hat in the ring.
Right.
No.
Yeah.
We're, we're trying to, I I, I, I don't, I think that muddies the message to, you know, potential applicants.
I, I'm sorry, Mr. Minor, you're gonna have to go further with that.
I, I think that the wording that I propose makes it clear, you know, that shall not be entitled to apply or accept appointment as a new superintendent. Now, that's as clear as day, I think, and, um.
I think we're in agreement with the intent. Perhaps let's go to Ms. Messenger's, um, notes and see if we can, these are your notes, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, I mean, I read through it, I just gave some of my own two cents there.
Okay.
Um, I got the impression that's what you wanted, so I just tried to, you know, um, mine are just in order. Um, my, my first question was about the word "schedule."
Right.
Um, because in Dr. Green's contract, the word "evaluation."
Yeah, the.
Is in there, and this one doesn't have that word. And I'm getting the impression it, you're maybe using it the same way?
No, no, we're not.
But I'm just trying to understand.
No, we're not.
What the goal is here.
So, so the goal here is to have a schedule of very specific outcomes, academic outcomes, uh, school scores, uh, metrics that are measured where, where Ms. Saunders will take a look at where we stand as a district with the intent of us becoming an A district and set very specific benchmarks to achieve. So, it's unlike Dr. Green's agreement and is more in alignment with the, the, the sort of the new age of agreements that are coming out of school districts in Florida where there's very specific academic achievements and goals which are measured. And so, there would be a schedule that would say, um, you know, maybe we're an A district. It would say that our turnaround schools are going to move from, you know, the, the D to a C. The seventh grade, uh, scores on the English exam at, uh, SUGS will be 40% instead of 20%, so very specifics.
Okay.
And what we would do as a group, we would take a look at those measurements and metrics, and it would be incorporated into a sched, scheduled agreement. So, there are very specific targets that are incorporated whereby we could measure success.
Okay, can I ask you something? So, I kind of took this as an opportunity to think about our next contract.
Mm-hmm.
And so, I guess my question is, when you put that in there, is that your intention to do that in future contracts as well?
That, and according to Mr. Dye, who participates in the group of general councils for districts, it seems to be the direction that they're going to. I took it from the experience with the state universities where those, those agreements have to go to the board of governors and there are specific, very specific benchmarks, not just that Likert scale of one through five and, and things like that, very hard numbers that you're gonna achieve these goals. And, and so, it, we tried to pattern this to set a standard of how we would further develop agreements with superintendents moving forward.
Okay, well, that's kind of how I went at it too, so I appreciate that you did that. I, I, now that you've explained that, I'm willing to see what that's like and then, you know, go from there, um, when we get to our next one down the road. My next one, um, was just, um, a reference that I, I really was just giving praise to, that I liked that it mentioned, uh, and I went back and looked at the law for the elected superintendent and looked at and saw the numbers and everything match up to the law and everything, but I, I liked that mention in there.
Okay, good.
One of my, uh, the next one was about the county vehicle versus, uh, and a vehicle allowance. And I, I just wanted to reference, um, Duval County's. Duval County's is a county vehicle. And that was my vision, I guess, um, thinking about down the line. Not necessarily now, you know, it's not necessarily a bone that I need to pick right now, but it's something that if we don't pick it now, I'd really like to pick it in the future.
Take it in the future, okay. I, I think we'd want to get an opinion on liability and all that sort of stuff, too.
Okay. Um.
But that's a very good point.
Uh, my next point was just, I support the language that she cannot apply.
So, we'd address that.
And my last one was about the language where, I kind of already been mentioned, that the, and it said, "Board will provide Saunders with an endorsement and recommendation for reappointment as deputy superintendent of instruction with newly hired superintendent upon the successful completion of her tenure." And I find that uncomfortable, um, because we've, I don't necessarily feel like that's our place. I would never go to Dr. Green and say, "Hey, Joe over there is doing a really great job. I say you should pick that one." Because then you're putting your superintendent in a rough place where they kind of feel like, well, you know what I mean? And, and, and to me, like, if, if she does a wonderful job, the superintendent's gonna go, "Yes, I want her," you know? But, um, I, I, I don't, I, I, I think that is, um, concerning, uh, just because I, I think that it puts us kind of. of in a weird place where, and I think it could make our next superintendent uncomfortable.
That's a good, that's a good point. I think what we're trying to do is balance the difficult position from an employment perspective we put Ms. Saunders in.
Right.
Who has a just renewed one-year contract with a salary guarantee, with severance, with all those, you know, and so.
No, I totally get that. I know she's doing, you know, she's willing to take this role on, and, you know, because of that, she could be in a very tough position when it's over. But I just, I think saying that we will endorse her to the next superintendent
Right.
Puts the next superintendent in a very rough position because we're gonna be their boss, and we're gonna say, "Hey, you should pick this person, they're great," and.
I think, I hear what you're saying, because we would have, we would need to do the endorsement in such a way that the new superintendent would not feel that we are compelling him or her.
I feel like when, after completion, as I said, after completion.
Successful completion.
Her, her record will stand on itself.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if you are, if we're gonna create these metrics and say, "Hey, we want you to hit this, this, this."
Right.
I mean, she's hitting those things. We see that happening.
Sure.
So if those things are happening, then I happen to believe, you know, your record stands for itself kind of thing.
Yeah, I think, just so you know how we evolved to this, is because the initial request was that when we hire a new superintendent, she would be able to go back into the position where she has her current contract.
Mm-hmm.
And we could not do that because we don't have the authority. And so what we're trying to work through is some sort of language that said that, you know, if she successfully completed the tenure as superintendent, however long that is, and I guess we're open to suggestions if, but.
Can I point out one more thing?
Sure.
Sorry. I, the interim contract for Don Hall, yeah, Mr. Hall said, "When a permanent superintendent is confirmed, Mr. Hall will return to his previous position of deputy superintendent of operations. He will remain in that position for a minimum of 12 months unless terminated for cause."
Yeah, and we do not have that authority. That should not have been in that agreement.
Oh.
We went through this ad nauseam. We, as a board, are very limited by statutes.
Right, no, and I'm not necessarily even agreeing with that, but what I'm saying is, that one also said, you know, something, still along those lines.
Right. And I understand it because Mr. Hall was probably in that same position. It's like, hey, while I do this, now I'm gonna be out of the job, and I don't have time to look for one, and I really don't have adequate severance, because let's, I mean, from, so I think, I guess, members, you understand what we're trying to accomplish with it. Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you. I just want to say that was a totally different situation because the board had already identified that we wanted to hire Dr. Green, and Don Hall was filling in. So the situation was different, and I think that's why that line was in there. I just want to make a suggestion, and Mr. Cologne, I know I stepped in front of you in the line, but my feeling is, why do we, like, the performance benchmarks, I mean, what we're talking about here is a kind of a temporary.
Oh, it's only, it's only if she is in place for a full year. It's only if she's in place for a full year, because, you know, if we didn't put any of that in there and our search did go for a year, what we certainly wanted to do is we want an understanding in an agreement of what the focus will be, how performance is gonna be measured, and it sets the precedent for a new superintendent to have, to understand that we have agreements that have very clear benchmarks and academic achievement targets, you know, financial targets and things like that. So I think it only, the, these sections with regards to performance is only at such time Ms. Saunders would complete a years of service.
That's not quite the way I read it, but.
I think.
The performance review shall be conducted prior to the end of the board's fiscal year. In no event shall the performance review be held later than the one-year anniversary. Measure of benchmarks associated.
Right, so if she weren't here for the, right, if she weren't here for the one-year anniversary, it would not occur.
But I'm saying even the process of, like, setting these benchmarks and going through all this, like, she, we are envisioning Cindy doing this job until we hire a permanent replacement for lack of a better term.
Correct.
So I think we should be doing benchmarks and that kind of five-year plan with the new superintendent, not with Cindy, who's kind of.
So even if the superintendent comes in and she is the superintendent, because that's the way the law is, you would not want her to have benchmarks to strive for?
I think we're just complicating the matter. I mean, if you want to get involved in all that, my point is.
I will tell you, it's good business practice.
I foresee this board hiring a new superintendent next spring. So we're gonna go through all this of, like, dialoguing and, like, look how long this has taken us already. We're gonna go through this big process, and then we're gonna hire a new superintendent in March before any, we can even assess any of these benchmarks.
I will tell you, the search processes that have been undertaken have gone on for some time. I think Duval's was almost a year.
It's fine. Maybe nobody agrees with me, and that's fine, I'm just putting it out there. I would wipe all this out. And as long as I have a floor for one second, if I may, all the leave, vacation, sick days, executive training, so forth, I think all that's fine. Whatever, the current superintendent, whatever is expected of our employees must live under is good. And I just got stuck on the 60 days, I'm on page five of 10. If after Cindy has served more than 180 days as superintendent, the board decides to terminate her without cause, she shall be entitled to receive a severance of 60 days' salary, not to exceed the limitation.
Right. And law, Florida law allows 120 days.
Right.
So we cut it in half.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm just not comfortable with $30,000, $31,000.
So you would have her lose the severance that she's entitled to now?
No.
Okay.
No, not at all. And that's what I'm saying, on that previous section, any vacation, sick, anything that is accruing, as far as, should continue to accrue just like it does for anybody.
That's why the severance clause is in there, because she has severance now.
What? 60 days.
Yeah, I think.
No, they're.
No?
Third-day contract.
That's all I got. Thanks.
Okay. So do we want to take up?
Okay.
Mr. Minor for a response.
I'd like to say that, the thrust, thank you, Mr. Cologne. I agree with Mr. Kennedy. I think we're putting a lot into this that doesn't need to be in there. I'd go a little bit further. In terms of having these clauses about for cause and not cause, it does involve litigation. You know, that's going on up there in Hernando right now, you know? And if either party is dissatisfied, at least in this interim agreement, then, you know, notice should be given that, you know, that's it, folks. And then there's not, it doesn't invite, involve litigation well to say it's, you know, for cause, and so then we don't have to pay you something that would be if, without cause. I don't think it adds to this contract to have any provisions like that. And my proposal doesn't include that. It just includes the giving reasonable notice on each side in the same amount of time that the contract's going to terminate. In terms of all this assessment and those goals, I think what the chair says is valid if you have, for lack of a, you know, better word, a permanent superintendent, but I think it adds complications to this contract. It doesn't need to be in there. You may note, and you haven't had time to review what I have, but in terms of compensation, it mirrors, you know, what was in the chair, you know, Dye, you know, proposal in terms of vacation days, personal days, sick days, cumulative sick days, chief executive, all of that. Vehicle allowance, I think it's better to give an allowance than give a car. The question about the liability, I think is important, I think this is well addressed, providing a cell phone, and continued participation in the retirement, you know, system. All of that is, you know, like in the chair, Dye. And the same thing about performance and authority is the same thing. Termination, in my proposal, paragraph five, it just says, the, Mrs. Saunders may terminate this agreement without cause upon 30 days' written notice to the board chair, and same thing, the board without cause can give notice to, you know, Ms. Saunders. Same provisions as in the Dye chair agreement about indemnification, exclusive contract, severability, modification, extension, entire agreement. So they're really very similar, except my proposal, you know, does not include the provisions about, you know, gauging performance, and also the for cause or without cause, and the provision that we've already discussed concerning not applying or accepting the superintendency. Thank you.
Okay, so we have three other attorneys in the room, an executive agreement that does not have a provision for immediate termination for cause. Is that a standard practice? Mr. Dye?
I would say at this level, it's unusual.
Could it perhaps expose us to litigation?
If the only provision for termination is without cause.
And a 30-day notice.
And a 30-day notice, then I don't know who would sue, because both parties would be following the contract. The litigation would arise if it's a for cause termination and that's challenged.
Because there's no provision for it.
Well, under Mr. Minor's, yes, I'm just comparing, you know, how it would come up. You know, looking over the dark side of the cliff, if there is evidence that would have justified a for cause termination, which is pretty dark stuff, if you look at the contract, misfeasance, malfeasance, you know, all those kinds of things, and the only thing you can do is terminate without cause, there may be an opening for criticism, but I don't know that it's gonna be something that'll be litigated.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, may I respond to that?
Yeah, Mr. Minor for a response.
Let's look at the dark, off the dark side, and I'm absolutely certain this would not happen, but that we found out that the interim superintendent had stolen $100,000. Now, and that's the headline in the Red and Herald. Now, that's not gonna happen, but that's a really dark side. And we could suspend that interim. We would be responsible for paying compensation, the salary, for 30 days. We would give, suspend and give notice that we're going to, you know, terminate the contact in 30 days. But in terms of continuing to carry out the duties of superintendent, that would not occur because their authority would be suspended, if not by us, maybe by the governor. And so, and I'm just trying to simplify it down. We're not gonna fight about cause or no cause. It's, you know, 30 days, and you're out, whether it's stealing $100,000 or, you know, we just, you know, think it's in the best interest of the district. Thank you.
Mr. Dye?
Mr. Chair, and it's hard to wrap around.
And I'll tell you what, if I could do this, I, I appreciate, I don't think we're gonna get to your issue before you need to show up for your state college.
Thanks for a little time.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dye?
And Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dye?
Yep, just to be clear, I'm trying to, you know, envision the what-ifs under Mr. Minor's version of the agreement, and it's kind of like trying to track the billiard balls on the break ahead of time, you know?
Right.
But say there is a very dark situation, and there's a termination without cause, so the superintendent is kept on the payroll until the time comes. The indemnification requirements may kick in at some point if somebody has to investigate it, and, you know, there's hearings and even from the administrative side, even from the criminal side, you know, depending on how dark the situation is. If the board has the with-cause option, that somewhat protects you from having to defend and identify.
Right.
Somebody that you may not want to. I really hate talking about Mrs. Saunders like this, you know, in the room, but this, you know, just a placeholder, you know, because I agree with Mr. Minor, I have no, cannot imagine such a thing happening, but trying to figure out how the contract works, you kind of gotta go there.
Well, I think in the dark situation, you suspend them, or the governor does, and the same things about indemnification and all that stuff.
Does your agreement have a provision for suspension?
No, but I think under the law, you just, you have that authority to suspend. You know, I think that's plenary authority of any school board.
Mr. Chair, I do think if there's a suspension, you're on the hook for the payroll.
Yes.
For the 30 days.
For 30 days, yes.
Okay. I'll leave this to the lawyers.
Trying to simplify it. Trying to avoid lawsuits.
Mr. Cologne, you've been waiting a long time, and I apologize.
Yeah, it's okay. I'm used to it. Personally, I just want to back up on a couple of things here. The board has absolutely no authority to mandate that a superintendent hire a deputy superintendent.
Right.
Zero, okay? And a good business practice, and under good business practices, leaders usually bring in a backup person they can depend on, who will have their back and who will exercise the type of judgment they're familiar with. So mandating that, you know, somebody hires someone else would not be a good business practice. Okay, loyalty counts. That's one. Two, I feel our students can't wait. We want performance measurements, we want a plan, and whoever's sitting in that chair needs to start developing that plan. There's already a plan in place that Dr. Green put in place. I'd like that plan fine-tuned, modified, if necessary, and I want to continue to move it forward so that we can be an A district, because we came darn close. And in my opinion, we need to get closer, we need to be there. We're paying our teachers what they need, we're recruiting the teachers we need, we need to continue that momentum. I don't want to change that. And the other thing, when looking for a new superintendent, I don't want anyone to be considered who has ever worked for the district before. I want new people, new blood. I don't want to retread, I don't want to go back to people who've been here before, people who've floated Mr. Mills' name to me, and, you know, I'm not going backwards. I'm just putting that on the record and making it really apparent. Anyone who has ever worked here before is out of the question. That's it, I'm done.
Okay. All right, members, any, if you've had time to look at Mr. Minor's agreement, and I, Mr. Minor, I will tell you, I'm all for simple agreements. I mean, I mean, there's one school of thought that says you shouldn't even have an agreement. You just hire a person in a job, and they either do a good job or they don't. So from a process perspective, I think you've taken most in the agreement. Now, I guess one issue is that Mr. Minor's agreement is for a one-year term, but it certainly provides for a 30-day termination. I think your agreement covers a one-year term, but there's a 30-year, there's a 30-day notice of termination, correct? So it's a 30-day agreement.
The paragraph two addresses that. It says in the second sentence, "Ms. Saunders shall serve as interim superintendent until June 30, 2019, comma, or until the board installs some, some other person to serve as interim superintendent or as superintendent, whichever may occur first, unless this agreement is terminated by either party."
Okay.
As here in after provided, which is the 30-day, either party could say, "Thank you very much, I'm going a different direction." So it's not necessarily, you know, one year.
Right, right.
But it otherwise.
But it does lay some predictability.
Covers things for one year.
Right, okay, okay. I think, I think we're pretty close with where Mr. Minor has drafted his agreement. I think. And at least there, unless there's any compelling reason to put the, you know, for cause, and I think, I think you've covered the indemnification section in your paragraph, was it four? Basically, it says we're not going to indemnify.
What, may I address one comment?
Yes, Mr. Minor.
With respect to paragraph five of my proposed agreement.
Okay.
There is the encouragement, "In addition to the annual salary provided by a superintendent shall receive an annual performance salary incentive from the board on the amount determined sections, 10,001, 54, 4 and 5, for participating in courses of continuing professional education" and all of that, and I, I think that's important, and I think you were alluding to that in your comments earlier.
Yes, sir.
"On successful completion of this special qualification certificate, Ms. Saunders shall be paid $2,000. On successful completion of the leadership development performance, she'll receive another $3,000, not less than $3,000 or more than $7,500." That's in paragraph five.
Correct.
And I think that mirrors the language.
Yes.
That you all had, and I thought that was a good thing to include, you know, in there.
And you did provide your version of the agreement electronically, so they can work from it?
I can, I can send that, yeah, I have to go back to the op, let me call my office.
See if you can get that sent to Mr. Die and then.
Okay.
Perhaps you can work together.
Can I be accused of calling my office?
Yes, please, 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 thank you. Are we good with that process? Mr. Minor will electronically get that agreement transmitted, Mr. Die can work on incorporating this, and then we'll take it up under new business?
Yeah.
Okay. Then why don't we quickly move to Mr. Horn's presentation?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, hold on.
Did Mrs. Saunders agree with the changes, or is that still?
I really need to see it.
You have to see it.
Because there are some things in the other that were not in Mr. Minor's, and like my sick day.
And as your attorney on standby, of course, we can work through this tomorrow, too, I guess, once, we can agree and then agree to make technical changes or something like that.
Agree in principle.
Right.
I mean, I think for the mo, but like, there's some of my sick day language and some.
I think we'll probably use the language that we already worked out for that. I think, I think we're talking about removing the act for cause.
The principle of getting rid of, you can't be named the deputy superintendent language, I agree, that shouldn't be in there. And as I've stated before, I have no problem with not applying in the process of the selection or.
Okay, okay.
So forth, so I think in that, but some of the other.
Let's talk about it real quick, because Mr. Horn really.
Some of the other items and technical piece I do think needs to be in the document.
Yeah, we'll work through it.
I think the one question was the indemnification piece, was indemnification there because statutorily?
Yeah, you have to put that.
There is a statute on indemnification.
I think Mr. Minor has it in there, but we'll make sure it's statutorily compliant.
We just have the number or refer to.
We'll just make sure it's statutorily compliant. Okay, Mr. Horn?
Thank you very much.
Did you tell him about our dress code?
That does not apply to Mr. Horn.
I haven't signed that contract yet.
He's got a button-up shirt, look at that.
Exactly.
I like it.
Did you wear shorts when you went to Congress? That's what I want to know.
I didn't get a shirt like that for reading with the kids.
And it was on the congressional record that I wear shorts every day.
Okay. Mr. Horn? The floor is yours.
Mr. Chairman and Board and Staff, Resolution 2017-11, Providing for One-Mill Increase, was passed on March 20, 2018, to increase student achievement through certain described means. The resolution provides that an oversight committee appointed by the school board shall issue an annual report to ensure the proper stewardship of the funds. In addition, the committee shall identify relevant outcomes and results to the community. First, on behalf of the newly-appointed committee and the chairman, who couldn't be here today because he's out of town, I want to thank the board for the creation of this committee and the quality of the appointments to the committee. After going through the organizational process, I want to recognize the board for the breadth and depth of knowledge of the appointed members. I feel confident we can meet the committee's charge and the expectation to the public. On February 13, 2018, the board unanimously passed certain action for the approval of a citizens advisory committee, including board-agreed points of general purposes. This general purpose included a bullet point list of designated duties. I believe you guys have those. The board action of February 13, 2018 was public information and was outstanding prior to and at the time, Resolution 2017-11 was presented for vote to Manatee County constituents. On June 12, 2018, after voter approval, the board adopted a resolution which limits certain duties listed in the actions of February 13, 2018. The committee does not request any duplication of oversight or duties, however, a large source of sales tax, however, a large source of sales tax revenue and other significant revenue sources for capital budget are not currently under any other citizens oversight responsibility. The committee is sensitive to the burden of the staff and will install a structure to prevent staff overload. Because of the changes of duties that was in the public domain at the time of the voter approval and the restrictions placed on the committee by the actions on June 12, 2018, after voter approval and the committee's desire to fulfill the charges of February 13, 2018, we respectfully request that the board considers reinstating the charges reflected on the January, darn, February 13, 2018 action. These sentiments are the reflection of the majority of the committee after open vote. Respectfully submitted, John Horn, Vice Chairman for Mr. Christopher. And I have copies of the resolution and the February 13 and the June 12, if you need those, but we'd certainly like your consideration.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Horn before he jumps on and starts heading in the other direction? Thank you, thank you for your patience.
I have one question. You voted against this resolution, didn't you?
I did, but I'm in favor of it 100%, because I think that's what a committee should do. If that's the will of the majority of the committee, I think the committee should all stand behind it, and I stand behind it 100%.
Thank you.
That's being a good board member.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Appreciate it. Any other questions, thanks for your service, too.
My pleasure.
Appreciate it. Have a good trip and be safe.
Okay, members, we are, we have work to do to prepare for the meeting. You know, we, I guess we can take that under advisement and we probably, it's a work-in-process. This is not supposed to be a stagnant committee. If, unless there's an objection, what I would like to do is just let everyone make a brief comment related to the financial advisory committee, and then we can leave this for a later time. Mr. Cologne?
No, I'll just say if John wants that and the majority of the board wants it, I'm fine with it. I don't want to get in the board's way.
Okay.
The committee's way, I'm sorry.
The committee's way, okay. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you. Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Thank you for you and the committee members who are here today, thanks for agreeing to serve. I think there's really a compromise here that we kind of touched on at the last discussion, and obviously we're going to revisit that tonight. So I think there's a middle ground to be had here between kind of both arguments or both sides of this issue as they are now. Thanks.
Mr. Minor?
I attended the meeting. The committee, you should be thanked for getting together. It's obvious that they did not follow the direction of this board. For an hour and 20 minutes, they talked about this. They had directions, you know, to, you know, proceed with, you know, getting a hold of what is necessary to provide the oversight of the millage. Instead, they talked in terms of trying to get around what this board said. In fact, Dr. Laird, who was sitting here, threw it on the ground. That was the disrespect evident, you know, for this board. I think that it's important that they get down to business. As one of the speakers said at the meeting, the oversight of this millage is a big job, an important job, and they didn't do it at this last meeting. And I wish they would stick to what this board has asked them to do, directed to do, and that's where I come from.
Ms. Messger?
This is coming up tonight, right? We're going to discuss it further. I mean, it doesn't seem like we're making any formal changes. I heard what the committee had to say, and I think that after hearing what, even some of the people that voted in favor of what Mr. Horn has brought, many of them, it didn't, it sounded like there could be a way to make something that will work for, I think, as many people on that committee as possible. And so, you know, I'm in favor of having conversations about that and trying to appease and work with and make sure that we are doing what we promised, and also fulfilling what the committee feels like they need in order to fulfill that promise, which I think was what some of the people that voted in favor were saying. So I, you know, I'm in favor of at least, you know, discussing it and figuring out how we can make that work.
All right. With that, we will adjourn the workshop, thank you. Oh, sorry.
Please open it in your next meeting, that we do need another member.
Right, right, and I think we have an applicant.
Thank you.
All right. Let's take a really quick break, how are you holding up?